Welcome to Happy Hour Holidays, your go-to podcast for entrepreneurship, life stories and business. We want to make sure that you can make your dreams come true. So get out, get inspired, get motivated and make those dreams come true. I'm your host every week Manny Fabre, our co-host Sean Fabre and in studio today, we got a jack of all trades. She is a broker, a general contractor, running for school board member of the Hillsborough County. And Gelexian Enterprise and Construction are her business names. We have Julie McGill.
Hi, everybody. My name is Julie McGill. Like I said, I'm a real estate broker and a contractor and I decided to run for school board. So.
This is, yeah, how'd you transition? Because I mean, those industries aren't really related, education and you know, construction, real estate.
Exactly. It may be that I just had my second great-grandchild announced. I have six grandkids and I have four kids that are product of public schools. My husband was watching a video I was showing him that I was, actually it was a different format. I was actually fighting against construction services with the city of Tampa and he saw it and he's like, you know, I just saw this thing on TV about the books in the schools. You need to go fight that. So I went to a school board meeting. And before I left, he says, you know, you should be on the school board. I'm like, yeah, whatever. I get to the school board meeting. And there's a guy in line in front of me and he says, oh, are you running? And I'm like, okay, that's number two.
So Julie was waiting for all the signs.
I was.
So number three?
Threw my name in and decided to run and I was the only one conservative one besides the incumbent that was running and then another one jumped in. So now the fight has become a little bit more difficult, but I'm determined and I know I have the right reason to go in.
So then you have an incumbent currently in that chair that you're trying to take over, right?
Exactly.
Because you're, you're running against chairs, I believe, or is it?
It's, it's members, it's chairs. Yeah. There's a chair of the board and that just fluctuates with whoever's. I don't know how they pick that chair, but it's one particular person I'm running against.
Is there like a seat number for it?
It's district one.
District one?
Correct. So district one is kind of the western part of the county. It's, they keep drawing the lines differently and I know there's reasons for that. But I keep trying to think, okay, what street is actually my district, but I'm, I've nailed it down pretty good. So it's mostly the western half and it goes up to 54. So that whole area.
Now, the book issue you were talking about, what was the book issue?
The book issue is, and I have a printout with the most disgusting books in it. And these people will go up and try to read it in front of the school board. And the school board will tell them, oh, no, 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 you, no, don't, don't read that here, but yet they'll allow it in the school library. So there's, there's a big problem at that. It's, they're pornographic, completely pornographic. And there's parents that have been ushered out of the school board in other states with these same books. And, and taken away by the security guard because it's too graphic for the school board. It's in the school library.
So what they're doing is they're sexualizing children at a very young age.
Absolutely.
And I mean, I don't have children personally, me and my wife don't, but you know, I don't think that's okay at like middle school level or even elementary school level to start learning about sex until you know, the child is more developed.
Exactly. So high school, okay, I can understand.
Yeah.
Part of that, but still not as graphic. It's still not as graphic as some of these are and they're also slanted to other. What do I want to say? Other persuasions? And that's not okay with me. If that's something the family wants to discuss or a church wants to discuss with that child, that's one thing. Or that child decides this is what I want to be or do. I don't need a school telling him to do that. I don't need a school suggesting that. So that's, that's where I draw the line as far as high school. Sexual education, of course. They need it. Okay. They've got computers in their back pockets. They know everything anyway. Let's educate them a little bit. But the lower grades, no, there's no reason for it. And you know, these people will defend drag queens and story time. Where are we going? And this is craziness. Who thought we'd be talking about this 20 years ago? So the books, I'm back to the books. This is what I'm fighting and, and I get questions of, oh, you're going to ban all the books. Oh, DeSantis is banning all the, are you on the same plane? No, I'm not. Pornographic books. I don't care if it's, if it's a different type of family book. All right. We all know that there's different type of families, but when it's straight pornography, no, I don't want it. But they're accusing me of, oh, you're going to ban classical literature. You're going to ban the Bible. You're going to be, no pornography. If I can't open it up in mixed company without being embarrassed, it doesn't belong in a school library.
Not only that, but essentially it is not the role of the educators to teach the children. Cause listen, kids can't vote, they can't smoke, they can't drink, they can't go fight a war.
Right.
But they can choose whether they want puberty blockers or not. To me, that makes no sense. And these books are essentially guiding them in that way. And I hate the word ban because it's not a ban.
It's not a ban.
Okay. You could go to a store and buy it.
That's right.
All right. It's not banned from America. It's just in, it's, it's not in the curriculum. So that word ban is gaslighting.
It is gaslighting.
Is what I think it is.
And, and that's, even though I say, I just don't want them in the library. No, obviously I'm a book banner. No, I'm not a book banner. It's just common sense. And as you say, it's, it's, you know, they're trying to, to suggest, okay, I was a tomboy growing up. God forbid, I was growing up in today's world, they'd be telling me to change my gender. That's crazy to me. That's crazy.
And, and unfortunately there's a lot of, maybe, well, I don't know about Hillsborough County. Cause I've been out of, you know, public school for quite some time.
Yeah, me too.
But there's other states that are allowing this kind of curriculum to be taught and to be accepted by the parents. And unfortunately for those states, the parents are okay with it.
That's another question.
Which is leading to the kind of moral ground issue. Like where do we draw the line? Are we going to teach them, you know? Honestly, this is probably the biggest issue.
I mean, this is, I mean, this is, this is classic social engineering where they're, they're, I mean, they're forcing this down the kids, I mean, throats. And you're thinking about it. I mean, they're not, they're not mature enough to pick a profession even at, in high school. And you want to pick, you want them to have a pick a gender? I mean, come on, man. These kids are just wanting to have fun. They want to play outside. They want to do sports. They don't want to be influenced on, hey, pick a gender.
Exactly.
What are you getting out of it?
Let kids be kids.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, it's, the world is hard enough. We don't need, we don't need to keep suggesting these things. No wonder we have so much mental illness in young children.
Exactly.
It's this, it's this constant bombardment of all these indoctrinations that they want them to go through. But yet 50% of our kids are not on grade level. Math, English and science, they're so far below now. Are they going to catch up? Or are we raising a nation of morons? I mean, I hate to say it, but.
It's looking like that.
It's looking like that. If we don't do something now, what's the next generation going to be like?
I think what the issue is that the school board is maybe getting their priorities mixed up, you know?
Exactly.
Instead of educating on life skills and you know, I agree with math, English, grammar, uh, social studies, meh. History, I think is very important. Um, but when it comes to, you know, gender specific uh, education, I don't think that's, there's any place. It is not the government's job.
Exactly.
To teach that. It is whatever the household, the nucleus decides to teach.
Let the family.
Let the family take care of it.
But let's exchange that with, or let's change out what, what they're trying to push down everybody's throat with financial literacy. Why don't we do more financial literacy? Because half of the people that graduate from high school, and I'm one of them. When I first, you know, got into the real world, what's an APR? What's an interest rate? How do I pay my bills? How do I balance my checkbook? How do I go to the bank and open up an account? Please tell me something.
How do I pay my taxes?
Yeah. How do I pay my taxes? No, I'd rather learn that. Why don't you teach kids at a young age?
Open a small business even, you know, something, you know what it is? It comes down to that the education system has been created to generate a workforce.
Yes.
Not free thinkers, not individuals that are entrepreneurs. They just want a bunch of people that are worried about something that is irrelevant as opposed to, hey, this is how you can actually be successful in life. Because America is supposed to be a land of opportunity, but if you're raising children to be employees, well then of course they're going to be pissed every time they don't get a raise. It's like, okay, well you can go out there and do it yourself. John D Rockefeller started a business when he was 12 years old and he became the richest man in the world. And he, and still to this day is considered the richest person to ever have existed minus, you know, the Egyptian pharaohs. But, uh, but that is what the school board is, uh, and maybe not just Hillsborough, but all school boards are focusing on generating a viable workforce as opposed to free thinkers. What do you think about that?
I, I do believe that. Um, but I do tout vocational schools at the same time. Because not all kids are college bound, but that's kids' choice. Okay. But we, you're right. We need financial literacy and we also need electives. I don't know what the electives are now. Are they gender questioning? Or are they shop and home ec and, and what we used to have? It's a missing link now. It, it needs to, we need to scale back a little bit and just use common sense and say, hey, you know, not every kid is college bound. Like I said, let's give them some other options. So they don't work at Burger King the rest of their lives, you know? And, and that, that's a big thing for me. And also the schools that they're closing, they could be turning those into vocational centers.
What schools are they closing?
Five this year now. They've closed just elementary school. You've heard about that?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Just elementary school sits in West River, which is a very up and coming area. It's riverfront property. Uh, it used to be Blake. I don't know if you remember. Blake is down the street. Stuart Middle is next to.
Are they closed Blake? Huh?
No, 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 it's next.
No, no. It's, it's, but they closed just, which is a under, under enrolled elementary school. Stuart Middle Magnet is right next to it.
I remember that one.
Okay. So they closed it because it was under enrolled. And because that community was so enraged because those kids were shipped over to Tampa Bay Elementary, or I think Dunbar or something like that. They used to be able to walk to school and this is a low income area. So now they've really screwed things up for the neighborhood. Neighborhood got upset. And now they're going to rebuild it for $70 million. So the school is still sitting there and it's not in bad shape. Yeah. The grass has grown up because everybody's ignoring it. Why not just remodel that school? Why are we tearing it down? And building another school for $70 million, which being a contractor, that's an outrageous amount anyway. So.
There's some pit pocketing there, you know?
I know there is because there's a certain construction company that always gets those bids. I never get that. I never get requests for bids for the school board.
Kickback is all that's happening there.
Well, look what just happened with the buses.
Which that's supposed to be illegal technically.
It's supposed to be, but it just hit, I think the Florida Voice, uh, newspaper. That four school board members just took a kickback from the bus companies that they're purchasing new buses from. That's, that's news. So this is facts. I'm not just speculating. Um, they got a kickback from the bus company.
Isn't that quid pro quo?
It is, it is. It's pay for play all day long, all day long. So.
Can we name those school board members?
I can.
Well, I mean, if, if it's public knowledge.
I don't want to put her in any, you know.
I have a target on my back now.
That's what I'm saying. So I don't want to put any big target on it.
It's news and you can look it up. You can Google it. Uh, anyway, there's a bus company that was, had the current contract. And another bus company came around and I guess the buses are cheaper and safer. This is what I've read. So the first bus company offered board members money to vote them instead of this new company. So they split it in half is what I understand. About half from the new company and still about half from the old company. And then those members that voted yes for the old company got their kickback. Wow. I mean, it's like, and it's out in the open. It's like, it's so, I guess it's just okay. They think it's okay, but it's not okay. And that's what I fight on a daily basis because it's not okay.
There're not, there might not be enough people that know that story. Cause this is the first time I'm hearing about it. What was the newspaper that you said?
Florida Voice, something like that. Yeah. I'll, I'll send you the link. It's amazing.
But when we talk about this, this is what happens in politics all the time. This is why this system is so corrupt and crooked.
Goes all the way to Washington.
Yeah. It goes all the way up to Washington. This is not.
Goes all the way up to the secret service.
These are, these are not, oh yeah, oh yeah. Yeah. These are not people that are worried about their jobs. They're worried about where they're going to pinch their next penny.
Absolutely.
You know, instead of worrying about the American people.
So what's the goal then? Once you get into office, cause I feel like you're going to win.
She was about to say that.
Politician. Once you get into office, what's your plan for, for, I guess, adjusting what the policies in the school board are. So this kind of corruption is no longer in that.
The budget. We need to make the budget transparent. I want to know where my taxpayer dollars are going. I don't know about you guys, but I want to know. And then they keep asking us for more millage. Okay. When I look at that budget and I see $220 million. Uh, I think it was a software program they bought. It was a, a, a social emotional learning software program. $220 million. And they're screaming that the teachers don't make enough. And get, don't get me wrong. The teachers don't make enough. They really don't. But don't keep asking us for taxpayer or, or property tax millage, which the teachers are paying as well. So it's kind of like, you're going to tax them and then pay them more. It doesn't, tax, tax them more and pay them more. It doesn't make any sense. So when I get in there and I analyze this budget, that's where I'm going to find a lot of waste and fraud. And I'm probably going to make a lot of people really mad. But we need to know where our money's going. That transparency will follow over to the board members because we're going to see why are they spending money here and there? Oh wow. Did they get a return for that? You know, there's a lot of intricate things going on. I haven't been on the board before, so I don't know all the little inner workings, but I will find out. And I'm starting with the budget. Everything hinges on the budget. Better education, making our schools better. Paying teachers better, better electronics for all the kids, not just South Tampa kids, but East Tampa kids. So you know, it's all on the budget.
So then what is the budget for, uh, the school board in Hillsborough County currently right now? Do you know that number?
I, I do not. I know it was 4.1 billion the last time, billion with a B. Okay. The last time I checked.
Cause if they're spending 221 or 220 million on one software, that seems like a, a serious mistake with their allocating of funds.
Exactly. And why aren't we spending that?
On the teachers maybe.
The teachers. And why are we, why are we buying millions of dollars worth of textbooks? That sit and never get used because they're buying software programs to take the place.
That's a great, a great question.
It's insane. Stuff like this is what I'm going to go find out.
Julie, for, for the audience, just a, a standard like understanding of millage, just in case the audience doesn't know what a millage is.
Okay. It's, it's your, it's your property taxes. It's a percent of the property taxes that you pay. But when they ask for that, it actually raises your property taxes, whatever that is a point zero five or point. I'm not sure what they're asking for. I think it's point zero five, but it will bring in from the whole county like an extra $200 million. So it's a substantial amount. And it's the higher your house is appraised at, the more you're going to pay. But you're paying for what? Where's it going? They haven't had a forensic audit in 10 years. We don't know where it's going. Well, we see where it's going part of the time and it's not going in the right place. So that should anger everybody.
I can tell you, when I moved into my house a year later, my property taxes jumped by seven grand. Yeah, I know. It was crazy. Um, but that's just because it got reappraised at a higher price, of course. And since then it has been going up, but what is the government doing with all that money? They should be transparent, correct?
They should be. I think all, the government was designed to.
Serve the people.
Serve the people. Thank you. So if we're paying, we need to know what we're paying for.
Yeah.
But yet it just gets pushed over here and pushed over there. And we don't know. We just continue to pay. And, and we got potholes on our streets. It's like, wait a second. It's not going in the right place. It's going to everybody's pockets.
Yeah. Because the Tampa streets, I mean, you drive down Hillsborough County and, and the main parts of Hillsborough waters, I mean, they're not good. Remember, remember when the RNC was in Tampa, like maybe I think it was, uh, eight years ago. And, uh, they raided our infrastructure and they raided our infrastructure at like a C.
Oh, wow. Oh, I believe it. They put palm trees on the side of the interstate to make it look pretty. You can't drive down the street. I drive a low profile car and I'm terrified. I'm driving Columbus. Oh my God.
Columbus is terrible.
Please. And then I hit a pothole on a side street and I actually sent the bill to the city of Tampa to pay for it. They said, oh, because it was not reported before I hit it, they wouldn't pay it.
Are you kidding me?
And I'm like, are you kidding me? The whole street is potholes and I know those neighbors. It was right at the end of somebody's driveway. You know darn well they reported it.
Yeah.
But no, no, I'm still fighting it because it was a $425 tire.
What kind of car you drive?
I gotta bet.
That's what he likes. All right, guys. When we get back, we'll continue the story with Julie McGill about the school board and what we can do. And what the biggest question is, is we're on this side of the fence. What about the other side and their questions on why they want to include some things in education that we think they shouldn't be there?
Exactly.
And we'll be, we'll be right back. Make sure you like, comment and subscribe and check out Happy Hour Holidays on Instagram, Facebook. And all the reels that we have with lots of information, educational, inspirational reels. We'll be right back. And we're back with Happy Hour Holidays and we were just talking off camera with Julie and she has a really cool website she owns. That I think it's, it's one of the coolest ones I've ever heard. What is it Julie?
It's presidenttrump.com. I bought it in 2013 for $9.
Wow.
I saw him on an interview, I think it was with Neil Cavuto. And he touched on, oh, I might run for president one day if, if I need to. And I thought, yeah, you're going to. So I bought the, I bought the domain. Developed it into a website and had it ever since.
So you developed it into like a full-fledged like President Trump website, right? It has like information, blogs, news and stuff like that?
Yeah. Yeah. I tried to stay current.
Death threats from owning that website, correct?
Yes. Over the years I've had several, especially back in 2016 when it was that heated campaign.
I, I don't think 2016 is as heated as it is right now because they tried to assassinate him.
I know, I know. I, I worry about on a daily basis. I, I don't even open a lot of the emails that I get because I know I, I just don't want to deal with it. It's, it's awful. You know, it's, it's scary, but I'm not giving it up.
No.
And I'll post every single day.
But you have, but you have had some offers for it to, to purchase it too.
In the past I have, but I wasn't sure who the offers were coming from. I didn't want to give it to the other side.
Yeah.
And I firmly believe that might've been where the offers were coming from. So.
I got a podcast that you would be great on.
Really?
It's the Young Republicans of, uh, Polk County.
Awesome.
Have you heard of them?
I think I have. Yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to pass your number along.
And also Tampa Bay developer with, uh, Greco.
With, yeah, with Garrett Greco.
Yeah.
Who was, he's the grandson of the mayor or is he the?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Dick Greco is part of my husband's family.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. So his son has a very successful podcast as well called Tampa Bay Developers.
Wow.
And they talk all about Tampa Bay. So that would be another good one for you. And they get a lot of abuse as well.
So then do you know him? Garrett Greco?
I don't know him. No, I know, I knew Dick. Um, yeah. He helped me get the speed bumps on my street. I went down and met with him. Yeah. He was, he was cool. He was, he had that open door policy, which I wish we still had.
Well, what's, what was that? Open door policy?
If you wanted to talk to him, you made an appointment, you got in.
Oh, no way.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It was awesome.
How do all mayors not have that?
They should.
They should.
They're the mayor of our city. You know, and that's the other thing. Our mayor, our current mayor can say, oh, we're one of the top 10 places to live in the whole country. Really? Our kids are not even on grid level and we have this much corruption that we can see and it's out in the open? That's a question in my mind. And, and if we're the top 10, why do you have potholes like we have?
Our dad's a civil engineer. He's going to hate this. The roads suck. Fix them. So actually that's what we went to school for was civil engineering.
Oh, wow. That's cool.
Julie, what, what got you into real estate and also being a contractor? Like I know those are your two, uh, main businesses as well with running for, uh, the school board member. But what got you into that? Like where did it start from? Let's say college years.
Okay.
To, to being a contractor and then a broker. I mean, it's really real estate.
How much time do you have?
We got all the time.
How much time do you have?
Technically we got till 12, cause that's, yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I got into real estate because I bought my, my house that I still have, my first house for zero down. That was zero down money days. Remember that?
Was it because it was one of the USDA loans?
No, this was, this was just a, a, uh, investor who bought it. So I got it for zero down. They used to have those wraparound mortgages. I finally undid the rap and now I own the house. I got the house for $60,000 back in 87.
Wraparound mortgages?
Wraparound mortgage meant that you paid the one guy that sold it to you and then he paid the person he bought it from. So it was kind of, he was in the middle and I finally.
So it's almost like a wholesale almost where they have like an assignable contract.
No, they didn't have that back then. It was, it was basically, um, it was just a wraparound. I don't know how to explain it. It was my first house. I was 20 something, but, um, once I did that, that idea stuck in my head. Wow. You know, we can, we can buy houses for zero. So then I became a wholesaler.
Yo, wow.
Uh, was plopping those bandit signs everywhere, hoping to God I wouldn't get caught. Made a good, a good amount of money on that. Then when that market kind of fell, I remember 2008, that tank. Okay.
I was out putting bandit signs during that time. Yeah, I was. I was doing it with my investor buddy and we were like, all right, we just go there. And I got stopped one time with the code enforcement. I had a whole crap load in my, in my trunk. He goes, you know how much those are for every single ones? He's like, go back and pick up every single one. I didn't do that. I just picked up.
Isn't it just littering?
Yeah. They, they consider it littering.
Isn't that just like 200 bucks? But if it's in your trunk, you're not bringing it along.
That's right.
They were so effective. We got a lot of calls.
I would joke with my husband driving home. Watch, we'll get a call before we hit the driveway. And we did.
Yeah.
It was, it was, it was crazy. It was, it was crazy fast money. It was. And then that tanked and I'm like, oh, maybe I should sell real estate now. So I got that. And then I started getting disrespected by brokers. It's like, I know more than you do because we, wholesalers knew it all. We did.
The ins and outs.
Right. So I'd be like, ah, no, you're wrong. And I'd like, you know what? I can't talk to this guy because brokers think they're way up here and agents are down here. So I went and got my broker's license. Then the market turned again and sales weren't so great. So I'm like, why don't we flip houses? I would have to hire a general contractor. And I'm like, wait a minute. No, I need to do this too. So got that. That's, that's, that's basically in a nutshell, how I got these two licenses.
So essentially you were just cutting everybody out because you were like, they're taking my profit. They're taking my profit. They're taking my profit.
And they also do less. I mean, you know, when you got, when you got the motor running, I mean, you knew more than them. It's like, why am I hiring this person and paying them this luxury fee? When I can just, you know, I mean, the schooling, I mean, I guess for the real estate and the broker, it's not as bad as the general contractors.
Correct.
As a general contractor, I know it's.
And now you're saying that you want to become a lawyer as well, correct?
I'm toying with it. I actually applied. Um, and that's a whole nother story.
Cause now she, now you want to cut the legal fees out too. Why am I paying this guy?
Not really because, um, because of being construction, I got a couple of people calling me that, oh, I've got a red tag. I got a violation on my house. And I'm like, oh, well, let me come see what the problem is. And I started getting more people, more people, more people. Cause I was helping people do it and I wasn't charging them an arm and a leg. So now I've kind of got a following and I've become semi-famous of code enforcement solutions. So I've been fighting construction services.
It's a good business name.
Yeah, I know. Codebusters or something. But, um, I go in and I video every meeting I have with construction services because they always come up with a different answer the second time you talk to them, especially the inspectors.
Do they let you do that?
They didn't want to. It's a public building. So I forced the issue. The last one I went to. The last one I went to, the head of construction services is not a bad guy, but he depends on underlings that hate me. They just, they say I disparage them. I call them names. I've never called them names. I just copy everybody on the emails that I send them so that everybody knows what's going on. And they didn't want to be videotaped. So I'm like, well, then leave the, the room. So there was a lawyer on the phone, like talking on the phone to the head of construction services. She's like, well, no, if those people don't want it, then she can't have the meeting. I said, well, no, they just need to leave. Well, they ended up leaving and I had the meeting with just the head of construction services, 47 minutes on tape of them explaining things, uh, telling us what they're not going to do anymore, which is using Zillow to catch people. They, they will look at Zillow photos and say, oh, you remodeled your house and you didn't pull a permit, even if it was a kitchen remodel that didn't need a permit. It's a, it's a whole other aspect. But that's why, yeah. But that's why I want my law degree because I'll have a little bit more power behind it when I do stand up in front of the magistrate and say, hey, here's, here's all the law.
Wow. That's crazy. So that's what they were doing. They were ciphering through Zillow and seeing if you remodeled your house. Like when you resold it or were more for investors or are you just talking?
I, I work for both. Like people that are just trying to sell their house.
Yeah.
And that ad hits because real estate agents, what did they say? Knew everything, right? That's what they're capitalizing on. Oh, wait. New roof, new AC. I don't see a permit for that. Technically it's social media. Technically they have access to it, but it's not a good look for the city. It's an entrapment. It's okay. Let me sit outside your house for sale. Oh, let me look. That's, that's just wrong. You know, if catch them in the act. If you catch a roofer putting a roof on and doesn't have a license, I'm fine with that. Go up there, cite them, violate it.
Yeah.
But for someone that's just trying to sell their house and you have, you've making an assumption that all that stuff was just done. Maybe it wasn't just done. Maybe that was done 10 years ago. That's past the statute, but they make that assumption and that's where I got them. You can't make that assumption because someone just says everything is new, that it wasn't done five years ago. It's still new.
But do you need a permit to redo your kitchen?
You do not.
Or yeah, your kitchen or bathrooms, if it's in the same area, you didn't move any plumbing.
It's cosmetics. You don't need a permit for cabinets. You don't need a permit for countertops, granite, appliances, flooring, paint, trim, nothing. But if you. Right. And if you do two of those trades and you remodel your kitchen, now you have to pull an entire building permit. And that's in our, that's in our building code.
Say that one more time.
Let's say you put a roof on last month and then you changed your AC because it stopped working six months ago. And now you just decided to remodel your kitchen. So if you do all this too close together, they consider it a remodel of the entire house and will make you pull an entire building permit. And if you've already done it, they make you get an architect and an engineer to make sure that you didn't take any walls down or that you didn't do anything that might affect the structure. And it's costing people thousands. And it's costing people thousands and thousands of dollars. Right when they're trying to sell their house, they get hit. Or right when someone just buys a house, it goes with the, the house, not with the owner. So that person that just bought that house just bought that problem. If it's, if the code inspector comes over and slaps a tag. Oh, it's awful.
But will title, well, it won't go through title like as a lien or anything?
Title doesn't know.
Oh, they don't know. So it just gets transferred?
It's a tag on the house. So unless that real estate agent, and how many times do they go visit a house that's on, that they're listing? No. So that could happen a week before closing, which it's happened cuz agents have called me, help. Oh, my God, we're in the middle of a sale. We're closing next week and we got a tag.
What's the solution for that then?
Me. Me?
Codebuster.
Codebuster, yeah.
I, I.
Who are you gonna call?
Yeah. No, I looked up statutes and thrown them at them and said, hey, you know, you can't do this. There's one, this was, this is awful. It's, it's on Davis Island, beautiful home. The contractor's taken a lot more time to do it because she keeps changing her mind on things. Okay, it's normal.
Yeah.
So in the meantime FEMA redo the, redrew the flood zone on her house. And now he's trying to remodel her garage, just tried to extend the permit one more time. They said, no, you can't. You have to pull a new permit. Well, if you pull a new permit, now it's going on the FEMA. She'd have to tear it on the house. She can't make that substantial. So I'm fighting that one and I told him, you have to fix this. You have to keep that twenty twenty permit alive. Otherwise, that house will always be in violation. They can't ever meet it because it's past a fifty percent FEMA rule, which is another, another whole thing I could explain, but it's very serious.
Why does the government wanna do this to individuals that are?
That's the question of the century cuz we don't know what the motive is.
Is it just to collect fees?
I don't know if it's to collect fees. I don't know if it's to make someone desperate enough to sell their house and maybe the city is
buying it.
Pay and play, pay for play there.
The thing is, we're making, we're making our city looking, look better if people are remodeling. Now, obviously you wanna do it correctly. But at the same time, it's like remodeling a kitchen, what is that doing? You know, I mean, the roof, I understand. You need a permit for the roof.
I get the roof.
Yeah. Electrical, plumbing, roof, um.
Pools.
Pools. Yeah.
And then, uh, the outside structure? Sure.
Yeah.
But anything inside? That, that blows my mind. I didn't even know that was happening.
A lot of people don't know. A lot of people don't know. And it, and it's like, they, if you, if you look at how they write some of this stuff, it's like, let's say you got mad and put your fist through the wall, okay? And you go to spackle that over.
Yeah.
Oh, no, wait a minute. That's actually something you need to, to ask them if you can do. That's inside your house.
Yeah.
So I got that kind of issue taken away because I'm like, I even asked the guy, you know, construction services, I said, don't you ever have to remodel? Or, or fix a wall in your house? Do you pull a permit?
Oh, that's a good question.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I bet they don't answer.
They just smile.
Got me there.
Yeah, but that's.
Seems fascist.
That's why I want to maybe get a law degree in construction.
But is there also, could you be part of, like, like you're doing for the education, the board? Could you be a board member for construction services?
Could you run for a different office?
Yeah, a different office or you need?
That would probably be city council.
Oh, it would be city council?
Yeah, um.
So you're trying to get your feet wet and then?
I don't know. I don't wanna be a career politician. I, I really don't. You know, people will go into politics.
I know, you got, you got it. You got it. I mean, you're a great speaker. I mean, it's, it's.
There's no ums in anything you say. You're direct to the point and you know exactly what you're talking about. I mean, it's kinda hard to not see you in that position.
Yeah.
That's number three.
That's number three, yeah.
Oh, boy.
But how, how are you balancing this? Do you have to do like a campaign and, you know, are you speaking and networking and all this? So I mean, how, how are you balancing, you know, you, you got a full-fledged enterprise and then, yeah, you don't sleep, right?
Don't sleep. Yeah, no, it's, it's tough.
Yeah.
I, I have too much on my plate, but if I do win the school board, I will eliminate a couple of those other things real quick so that I can concentrate on the school board. I wanna go in there, make it right and get out. I'm not gonna be a career politician. I don't care about escalating on the ladder and getting rich. That's what people go into politics for. Look at Nancy Pelosi. Look at AOC. AOC. She's set for life.
They go in broke and somehow lead multi-millionaires. Nancy Pelosi's worth like two hundred fifty million dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's inside her trading and she's giving tips to her husband. And then some guy got mad and hit him with a hammer, but, you know? That actually did happen.
Julie, you were doing something really generous with your first year salary if you do get elected. Where was that?
I'm gonna donate it to a, a children's charity in Tampa.
Oh, that's fantastic.
I'm not going in there to make the salary. I'm going in there to help the kids.
What charity?
It's called, uh, Manny, Manny Land's Foundation for Children and Families. I actually established it because his, his wife is a widow now. He just passed away within la- last month. Um, and he was very community oriented. He was a dear friend. And I thought, you know what? Let's establish a charity that I know where the money's gonna go and I know it's gonna go in the right place. So I've actually applied for the five oh one three C or whatever the nonprofit is. And it's coming down. So if I win, definitely that's gonna be an active thing that I donate my first year salary to. I didn't say second and third because I don't know if these other businesses I have are gonna tank because I have to spend so much time on the school board. I may need that salary, the second, third year, but I don't the first year.
Yeah.
So, you know, I got enough to sustain me. So I thought that, that was something that will prove that, hey, you know, I'm going in it for the kids. I'm not going in it to get rich. I'm not going to escalate up the political ladder and become a multimillionaire. That's, that's not the goal. And that's a lot of the goals of the other people.
How do you plan to engage with teachers, students and faculty of schools to kinda hear their voices and make sure that it gets heard out there in the public eye?
I've already visited a bunch of schools, uh, just running the campaign. And I see schools that have everything and they know their rep on the school board and others that have never seen them. So that would be just visiting the schools, staying in touch with the principals. What do you need? What can I help you with? That, that would do it. And then actually getting the community involved around the schools. That's huge.
What are those, uh, meetings that they have, school board meetings? Any parent is able to go? Any citizen in Hillsborough County is able to go? And then they just voice their concerns and they each get like sixty seconds or something?
You gotta sign up to speak. But you, you can stand up there. I think you get two or three minutes, one or two, one, two or three minutes. It just depends, uh, to, to voice your opinion. They cannot answer you. You're just standing up there voicing your opinion, just like city council. They can't answer you. You can't call them out. But a lot of times the media will be over here. So I got caught on channel thirteen about the budget. It aired at eleven o'clock at night. By six o'clock in the morning, poof, you couldn't find the story.
Really?
So somebody, I, I pissed somebody off.
And the media is really good at hiding things they don't want people to see.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah.
And their, uh, their, their handlers.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Alright guys, when we get back with Happy Hour Holidays, we'll continue with the fascinating stories of Julie McGill. And we'll be right back. Make sure you like, comment and subscribe and check out all our reels and our Friday features. Really appreciate everybody tuning in and we appreciate the audience out there. Happy hour holidayzers out there supporting us and almost getting us to that one thousand mark on our followers on Instagram. We'll see you soon. Alright guys, welcome back to Happy Hour Holidays. We're here with Julie McGill, who's running for Hillsborough County member. Um, so we were kinda touching on, what do you envision the future of Hillsborough County schools in the next five to ten years? With such an influx of people coming into the Tampa Bay area?
Exactly. So it remains to be, yeah, remains to be seen. So are those people with families? Do they have kids? Are all those people coming in, a family of maybe two kids? So maybe some of those schools were closing, will need to be reopened to, to accommodate it. But if all those people were not, and they're all millennials that have dogs instead of kids. That's another question.
Holy shit, that's me.
Then are we, are we gonna keep those schools closed? And if we can't make the schools better, if you don't get people like me on the school board and those schools continue to decline, are you gonna see an increase in people that are homeschooling their kids? Out of fear, safety is a huge factor with parents. We can't make our schools safe. They're likely to start homeschooling. That's gonna fo- force more schools to close. What are we gonna end up with? I don't know. I, I don't know.
The charter schools and the private schools? Because I feel like parents now are so concerned about what's being taught at school.
Correct.
And then also with safety, that a lot of them are looking into doing private schools.
Exactly.
You know, and now with private schools, I mean, people don't know about this, but I mean, I'm sure you do, Julie, but you can get probably about seventy-five percent of their, you know, cover.
Vouchers, the vouchers.
And I mean, I know some people that make some pretty good money and they still got the voucher. So you're talking about.
Income specific anymore.
So are these private, you know, schools now, I mean, are they gonna, are they really gonna be making a lot of revenue compared to what they use? But are they gonna have the space in order to, you know, cuz they're limited, you know?
Well, I mean, when, when it comes to private schools, what I think they would probably do is raise tuition so they could purchase more land in order to create more structures to accommodate the influx of.
Tampa Catholic just did. I live right down the street. I drove down it the other day and I'm like, oh, my gosh, they're actually building like this huge wing. So that means they're getting more enrollment. If you think about it, they're not gonna be putting that kind of money into the school if they're not getting more enrollment. It's huge. Uh, I'll try to send you pictures.
But they're not, but.
Where our mom went.
But the.
She went to Tampa Catholic.
Oh, yeah. No, no, she didn't. She went to Tampa Bay Tech.
Tampa Bay Tech, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, she.
Sorry, Mom.
But, I mean, uh, the, the actual Hillsborough County School Board isn't in charge of the private schools, right? They're, they're, so they, there's no.
They don't have a say. No, not on those. Now charter.
Yeah.
They do.
They do, okay.
Um, but.
And what's the difference between the charter and the private?
Charter schools are still public schools.
Okay.
Um, they just don't have to follow all the rules that normal public schools have to follow. They do their own testing. They, they don't have to follow all those guidelines. I'm not quite sure where that line is drawn, but it's different. Um, and they are more appealing to some of the parents that are afraid of the public schools and what they're being taught. So charter schools are good, private schools are good. We also have magnet schools, which are specific. You know, photography or veterinarian things. I think those are wonderful. That's kinda going on that vocational angle. Um, but, you know, we don't have that many magnet and then they get filled up. So, you know, there's a question of, of how is, in the next ten years, how is everything gonna meld? Are we just gonna be magnet and, and charter? Do we even have any public schools left? Who knows?
Yeah.
Julie, you grew up in Tampa Bay. As a native of Tampa Bay, have you seen the rise of Tampa Bay or have you seen the fall of Tampa Bay in terms of Hillsborough County schools?
I think it got better for a while, um, since I've been out of school. Because technology got there. I went to Dale Mayberry Coleman and Plant. I'm a South Tampa girl.
Oh, she went to high school?
Yeah, did, did. Um, of course, with the advancement of technology, schools became, became better because now we all have computers and we didn't have that back in the day. Where I've seen it decline is in the last ten years with all the indoctrination that's trying to take place. Um, software programs that are being purchased for social emotional learning. We're not focusing on the, the basics, math, English, science. We're not focusing on those like we should. So now I believe we're in a, in a bad decline. That's why we need to get the school board changed so that we can start purchasing things that are gonna mean things to our kids, that are gonna help them academically and not socially and emotionally, which that's a whole thing that cropped up that, it, it snuck up on us. It basically snuck up on us.
Safe spaces.
Right, yeah.
Which I, I didn't have that in school.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were like, hey, listen, um.
Duck down under your desk.
Bomb drill, run.
Exactly, exactly.
But going back to what you were saying, kind of a little sidetrack off the education, but why do you think millennials, this generation is so against?
We gotta worry about Gen Zers.
Wait, wait, wait. But so against, uh, having kids? Like, do you think that they're more so selfish and they want their time? I mean, what do you think this transition happened? Because, I mean, past generations, it's all, it's been, all been about having a family.
Correct.
So is it selfishness? What do you see in this?
I don't know if it was so much selfishness. If social media plays a role in that or did the teachers under our noses play a role in that for the ones that are just now graduating and, and just young, by, trying to buy a house, you know? But then, have they been indoctrinated to not have kids? Have they been scared not to have kids? I don't know. Is it the economy? It could be. I mean, it's very expensive to have a child. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but there's a definite movement in millennials to have a small yard, a dog, and a happy family life and be able to go out and party and not have to worry about taking care of a kid. I, I, you know, it's sad.
A millennial without a kid.
Yeah, selfish.
Selfish, no, no. Me and my wife just waited too long. That's probably, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, i- it's tough because I've seen that and I feel like even before you would see families of four or five.
Right.
And it could be the economy playing a role in it or is, is it too, or, or, well, we're having kids later on. So the energy level that you have to have for a kid, you're thinking, hey, you have a kid at twenty-one.
Right.
You have plenty of energy, but now that the millennials kind of waded into their late thirties, I mean, it's a lot to handle.
It's not all millennials though, because I have seen millennials with five, six, seven kids.
But they're not the norm. It's not the norm. It's great. Cause they're making up. If they're having four or five, they're making up for the ones that don't have any.
I mean, all, all you really gotta do is go into lower income areas where they're incentivized by the welfare program to actually have children so they don't have to work, so they can collect from the government. Because the government has incentivized lack of nucleus in a family in low income areas. So.
But they're waking up to that. A lot of people are waking up to that. You see it. They're switching to become conservative. They don't want entitlements. It doesn't get them anywhere. They're seeing that. They're understanding that now. And that's, that's, that hasn't happened in a long time, but I've seen it. I've seen people interviewed and, and it's obvious. So hopefully that trend will, will keep going and we'll have less people and entitlements.
A friend of ours, he told us a story where he was, uh, back in high school manager of McDonald's, okay? And he was promoting this woman to, uh, get a, like a five dollar raise. And she said, hey, listen, if I get this promotion, I'm no longer gonna get support from the government. So I don't want the promotion. I will work extra hours to make the same amount of money so I can stay on the welfare program.
See, that's bad.
I mean, thi- this is something that is per- perpetrated throughout all low income, uh, communities.
It's familial. It's, okay, mom and dad are on welfare. Okay, well, then I need to be on welfare. Well, I'm gonna teach my kids to be on welfare. It's just a chain reaction. Until somebody breaks that chain in that family and says, hey, I wanna go to college. I wanna be somebody. Then the train, the trend will maybe change, but it, it's been ingrained in, in certain people for so long. You just live off the government.
Sixty-five.
Exactly.
Since Lyndon B. Johnson.
Exactly, exactly.
But, but since every.
Lyndon B. Johnson was a vice president that became President Manny after the Kennedy assassination.
I'm just messing. You're dead to me. No, but, but look, you know, as everything.
Getting them back cuz you played golf horrible yesterday.
As everything evolves, right?
Uh-huh.
Is our school system broken compared to, it hasn't really evolved much since it first started? Yeah, since it first started. Are we teaching kids the best things to be successful in life? Or have we kinda gotten out of rhythm on what we should be teaching?
I think we're out of rhythm.
Because do we really need almost eighteen years of general education with an additional two years in college to?
You mean four years?
Yeah, no, well, two years and then you're, you're kinda going towards your, whatever you're gonna do, what industry. So do we need that much general education or should we be using that time a little bit more wisely to shape new Americans into? I, I think some of the other countries are beating us.
I know.
They are. There's no thinking about it. It is absolutely.
So, so is our education system broken at this point where we're not evolving? Technology's evolving, but our school systems are teaching the same things that they did in, since the beginning?
You know, actually, I, I think that is a great take. It has not evolved since the early nineteen hundreds. It has stayed the same, even though technology has changed. Really, I think what would be an evolution of the education system is to have schools that are dedicated to certain industries. So let's say that the parent thinks, you know what? My child is astute. We wanna put him in a business oriented public school. Or, hey, listen, my child likes sciences, so we're gonna put him in a science oriented school. Or, hey, they like maths, we're gonna put him in a math focused school. That way the kid can be honed at a very early age to become an expert by the time they've gone through the eighteen years or, or it's not really eighteen years, right? It's twelve grades and then two, so fourteen years. And then you will get at the very end a very expert individual because if fourteen years goes by, yeah, very focused, very identity focused. This reminds me of a, uh, Ethan Hawke movie and, um, and, uh, I forget the other guy's name. He's a British dude. Uh, and the children are engineered for certain tasks.
Right.
And I'm not saying that's the best thing because the child needs to have a choice at the end, but once they become an adult, they can choose whatever they want.
That's right.
But if they are focused on just one specific thing, man, you could just produce a lot of very motivated people in certain industries.
That's taking the magnet schools and expanding on it. That would be, that would be awesome. That would be awesome.
Yeah, cuz you gotta think about it. When you grow up, you read books that you enjoy. You don't read books just because they're there.
Well, I, I read Goosebumps.
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, you obviously enjoyed them.
Oh, hell yeah.
Yeah, so that's why, yeah, but I'm just saying in, in general, I mean, you're gonna read about topics that you're interested in. Yeah, you're not gonna read stuff that you're just like, okay, well, I gotta read this to do a, you know, book report or whatever it is. So, I mean, I just think that there needs to be like a little bit of a change in the school system to create better individuals so that we start winning again as a country.
Exactly, as a country. Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to find that movie that I was talking about. It was like in the nineteen nineties.
So like, so Julie, you know, there, there's a lot of, uh, talk about diversity, inclusion. What are your takes on that when it comes to the educational system?
I wish that word never existed.
Yeah.
Um, we never had it before. We never had a problem. It's divisive. I, I don't think it's needed. It's, uh, it's toxic.
Gattaca.
Gattaca.
Yeah.
Did you ever watch that one?
I, I, I think so.
What years is it from?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven?
It's with Jude Law and Ethan Hawke.
I've never seen it.
Yeah.
Watch, watch that movie.
I remember parts.
It's a really good movie.
Really good movie. Yeah.
Anyway.
Mister Clark is a good movie. Has, have you, have you seen that?
Mister Clark, who's in it?
The, the comedian that just passed away. What was his name?
Um, Gene Simmons?
No.
No, no.
No, he wasn't a comedian. He was an exercise guy.
He wasn't on Friends. Oh, I can't, I can't remember his name. Anyway, Mister Clark.
Matthew Perry.
Yes, yes. He plays a teacher coming out of, I think it was one of the Carolinas. You see, he goes up to the Bronx.
Yeah, yeah.
That is one of the best. I think that's, should be mandatory for every teacher to watch that movie before they become a teacher because he did the impossible. He did the impossible. He went up to the Bronx, took a classroom that nobody wanted, no teachers wanted. Even the principal was like, you don't want that. And he says, that's the one I want. Took that classroom and they actually scored higher on the test than the smart kids across the hall. It's a, and it's a true story. Amazing movie. That should be mandatory for any teacher that enters Hillsborough County.
You know what? Actually I got a good question for you. Do you think children that are in recreational or competitive sports do better in school during the public school era, um, before they go to college or anything? Because they have learned discipline and practice through those competitive sports than the children that are just, once school's out, that's it. They just go home and they could do whatever they want.
Well, that's the problem. Do whatever they want. That's where a lot of them get in trouble. I think sports are wonderful. Um, because it's, now it's a team effort. Now they're learning to play on a team. They're learning, you know, discipline.
And you get leaders out of that.
And you get leaders out of that. Absolutely. Yeah, I, I love, I love having sports.
Yeah, no, without a doubt. Julie, I really appreciate you coming on. You know, it's been great. Is there anything you wanna leave to the audience? We always have like final word or final take that you wanna kinda put out there to the audience? It could be motivational, inspirational, whatever you wanna tell the audience. Yeah.
Vote for me. Vote for me.
What, what day? Because there's one August twentieth.
August twentieth is my due date. My, that, that's my D day. That's, if I don't make it on the twentieth.
So it's not November third also?
No, it, what it is, is three of us and it's a nonpartisan race. So all three of us, whoever gets fifty-one percent.
On August twentieth?
On August twentieth wins. If nobody gets fifty-one percent, which is highly unlikely if there's three of us, um, unless I'm completely wrong, then it will be the two that go to November. So it's either me and Nadia or Leila and Nadia. Cause Nadia's got a lot of popularity. I figure she's gonna be at least one of the ones. So it's really between me and, and my running mate.
Okay, so August twentieth, go vote for Julie McGill, M-A-G-I-L-L, right?
Yes.
For school board, Hillsborough County. Manny can't vote.
No, Pasco County.
Yeah, he's Pasco. I'm gonna go vote though, cause I live in Hillsborough.
Wonderful. I appreciate it.
Well, now you live in like Pasco, right? Yeah, Pasco.
Yeah, Pasco County. I was over here in Lutes, but.
Yeah, we poor Richie.
Well, it's Trinity, man. It's Trinity. It says it all my job.
I like Trinity.
It's not too bad. It's kinda small. Um, so yeah, man, really appreciate you coming on Julie with, you know, with all your trades, you know, having, you know, contractor.
Well, also can they donate to your campaign?
Absolutely. Julie McGill for school board. I have a QR code. Click it.
Is that dot com?
Julie McGill for school board dot com. Yes, yes.
Gotcha.
So donate for Julie McGill. Go vote August twentieth.
Yeah, and, uh, let's get her elected, you know, so we can make some changes in the year.
Thank you.
So we make some changes on the school board that's much needed. And, uh, you know, we really appreciate everybody listening to our podcast. We're trying to bring in as many guests that are informational, inspirational and motivational. So it's been great having the audience build up and, uh, keep tuning in because it's getting, it's only gonna get better. So, uh, like, comment and subscribe and thank you Julie again for coming on and we wish you the best of luck and we're definitely gonna vote for you.
Thank you so much.
Unfortunately, I'm in Pasco County, so.
I'm gonna tell my wife to vote for you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, thank you guys. Peace out.